Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the March 17th, 2020 regular school board meeting to order. The first item is to accept the agenda. Mr. Hill, are there any revisions to the agenda as printed?
Madam Chair, we do have revisions.
If you would read that into the record for us?
C3, recognitions, boys and girls' club of Polk County, removed. C4, recognitions, AgriFest support presentation, removed. C5, recognitions, arts in our school's proclamation, removed. R32, recommendation for administrative and instructional personnel actions, updated item, moved to consent. That concludes our revisions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the agenda for March 17th, 2020 with the noted revisions.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Townsend. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Now, I would like to ask Board Member Lisa Miller to give our invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, we come together today in a time of uncertainty and great need. Please be with the leadership team and board as we make decisions to care for all of the children in Polk. Please be with the doctors, nurses, first responders, the scientists, and the people working to care for the sick. We pray for our seniors who came into this world under 9/11 and have grown up with active shooter drills and lockdowns. They are leaving our care under a worldwide pandemic. I pray they become the compassionate leaders of the future. Thank you for the caring teachers and staff who are stepping up with love and comfort to the children they cared for in the classrooms and the schools. We pray for collaboration and peace in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. At this time, I would like to ask Board Member Sarah Beth Reynolds to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, and you may be seated. The next item is public comments on agenda items. And I do have three folks that want to come up and speak on items that are on our consent agenda, so I'd like to call them up first. And then after that, if there's anyone else that wants to address the board on items specifically that are on the agenda today, you'll have an opportunity to do so as well. The first person I'd like to call forward is Madeline Aix. If you'd like to come forward, you have three minutes to address the board. And if you'd be so kind and give your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Madeline Aix, 401 40 Packard Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, 34772. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak today. For those of you who don't know, Dr. Aix is my father. And as you all know, he's a little rough around the edges. We all know that. He's from Louisiana. He's got a lot of Cajun in him. All I know is I've been with my dad for almost 20 years now. I know that he would never threaten or harm any human being, especially a woman. My dad wants nothing more than just to be able to speak to the board. He is unable to be here, otherwise he would be. He's been in medical treatment since February 16th. All I'm asking for is some compassion to move this item off the consent agenda today, March 17th, and to have it moved to the next board meeting, April 28th, 2020. I know some of the social media posts have brought up other events in the past, the two main ones being from two counties in Georgia, where one, our family was directly threatened, and my dad was only moving in self-defense to protect our family. The other being, all the other people in the district wanted to have segregated proms, and this was back in about 2004, so obviously that is not right. And that's all my dad wanted was to not have that happen. He wanted to have integrated proms to be fair to all students. My dad loves his job, and he loves the students, and that's all he wants, is to do what's right for the students. And I truly believe that's all he was trying to do here, is do what's right for the student and the faculty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aix. So at this time, in order to respond to that, I need to ask, is there any board member that wants to pull this item from the consent agenda today?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Would it be appropriate for me to ask the young lady a question?
That's a Mr. Bridges question.
What is your question, Mr. Wilson?
Well, my question is, what would be the reason for doing that? What would be her reason for asking us to do that?
That is certainly a question that only she could answer.
Right.
Can you come back up?
No, I'd like to hear from counsel, because this is a matter that is in legal hands at this point in time. So, yes, sir, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Too many lawyers in the room.
Amen.
I'm Don Wilson, and I represent the Superintendent of Personnel Matters for the School Board. The way the system works is the superintendent recommends disciplinary action. If the person wants to have a hearing over that, and it's a type situation where they're entitled to one, as this is, they request in writing a hearing. So, that's already happened. So what the school board is doing is tentatively adopting the superintendent's recommendation pending a hearing. Tomorrow, we will send a letter to Tallahassee requesting the appointment of an administrative law judge that will come to Polk County, have a hearing. Dr. Aix can present his case. We'll present the facts as we know them. The judge will enter a recommended order. It will come back to the school board. If either side objects to any part of it, they can file exceptions. Then it will become before the school board, and y'all can make the final decision. So all that's happening today is adopting the recommendation subject to a hearing.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up for us. I appreciate it very much. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
This might be for Mr. Wilson.
Go ahead. Uh-huh.
My question is, the action taken today, would that prevent Mr. Aix from taking advantage of, if there's a medical condition, his disability insurance or anything of that nature?
I don't believe so. I mean, he, my understanding is that, you know, through COBRA, you can continue your health insurance and that type of thing for a period of time. I don't know what our benefit is. I'm not familiar with those details.
So today's decision would stop the income? You'd be, he'd be, is what the recommendation is?
Yes, yes.
And that's probably the answer, I'm assuming, to Mr. Wilson.
Correct.
Am I allowed to say something else?
Let me go through the board first. I have board comments. Just please wait a minute. Ms. Fields?
Mr. Wilson, what would be the value of delaying this, as Ms. Aix is questioning? What's the value of that?
I don't think there's any, I mean, the quicker he gets to a hearing, if he can prove himself in that, he'll be back at work.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't think there's any benefit.
I just wanted to know what the value would be of delay. Thank you.
Ms. Fortney?
Well, I read in our preparation that it's with benefits, it's suspension with benefits. Is that what everybody else read?
Yeah, that is correct, that we've changed that in recent years so that people suspended without pay are still, their health insurance continues.
Thank you.
He still continues as an employee of the school district until such time as the board acts to terminate that.
So today's recommendation is pending the due process coming forward?
Correct.
It's not the final?
Absolutely.
Can I?
Yes.
My question is for Mr. Bridges. You indicated that he would still be an employee. Would that, does that also include pay or no?
No.
Okay.
What is proposed today, and this is the process that has been in place in this district since before I got here. If the board, if the superintendent recommends termination of employment or discipline of any kind that affects their pocketbook, the first nickel causes a due process right to arise. And under Florida's Administrative Procedures Act, the individual has a right to due process. In Polk County and most other counties, that is afforded to them through the division of administrative hearings and the appointment of an administrative law judge, so the board does not directly hear these trials, these cases. But if the superintendent recommends termination, typically, she will suspend the individual with pay and then recommend at the next following board member, board meeting, that the employment be terminated. If the individual requests a hearing, then she would, that request would be delayed, but she would bring to the board a request to suspend without pay pending the outcome of the hearing. They remain employees. They have not been terminated, but it would be a suspension without pay until such time as the hearing was accomplished and the recommended order was brought to the school board for action. But that has been the process used in this district for over 20 years.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, I would like to add.
Can I, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I float something larger, just throw an idea out, and I'm not at all sure how this would work. I would not support pulling this off in any kind of normal circumstance, and I wouldn't support doing it just for Dr. Aix. But I do wonder if there's not a humanitarian case to be made for everybody on that list who's getting terminated to be delayed a month? Like, I mean, we're in extraordinary time. I don't even know, I mean, some of these people may have already had their pay cut off. By next month, by the end of next month, when we meet, like, I suspect we'll probably have some help from the federal government for people that they're talking about giving people checks. I just want to throw that out to the rest of the board. I mean, I'm not necessarily advocating for it, but I am thinking about it. Like, what is, does anyone else have a thought along those lines? And it's not for this case specifically, it's for anyone. We're going to terminate now.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Reynolds?
I just want to point out some of the, for instructional and administrative, there's a few of these that are advanced degrees, salary change, those types of things, that it's not necessarily just terminations, that it would have, I think, an adverse effect on some of these individuals.
Can we remove the terminations? I mean, keep that, remove the termination? Just again, just a thing I'm thinking about. I don't, if there's no interest in that, that's fine, but...
I have no lights on for further discussion. Ms. Fields?
I would just say, if we're going to do it for this group, we're going to be needing to do it for other groups in the future. That would be my comment.
That we'd be setting precedent.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. My thought would be, let's think about it. We're not to the consent agenda yet, so I'd like to move on with public comments at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And y'all think about it as we move forward here in the next few minutes. Now, I would like to call Anjanetta, I hope I said that correctly, Sanchez, to please come forward. And if you'd be so kind, and introduce yourself and your address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Good afternoon. My name is Anjanetta Sanchez. My address is 751 Grave Street, Haynes City, Florida. So I just want to say good day, everyone. I give honor to all the board members who are here today and to, I guess, Ms. Bird and her absence, and it sounds like Mr. Townsend is listening in or something. So I just want you to say that, I wanted to say that, you know, your guys' work is not going unnoticed, but I only have three minutes, so I think I need to probably focus on myself right now, because I'm here battling for same thing, termination. So I know this is old news, but a few weeks ago, I was at HBCU Jump Off in Lakeland, and I took my daughter and a few other students there from my community. This event exposes students to the possibility of furthering their education. My daughter has already been exposed to college life, because I have a son that graduated from college, and then I also have two kids in college right now. But it wasn't about my child. I was committed to taking other children there. And while I was there, I believe in what your motto says, "Students First," so I took those kids there because I'm interested in their future, not just my kids. While I was at the event, one of the emcees introduced a board member, Ms. Sarah Fortney, who was in attendance. She told the students that she wants to make sure you all are treated fairly, and that's why I'm here today, because I want that same treatment to be treated fairly. And I see my time is ticking, so I'm going to move on. So for days, I have been jotting down things to say, but this morning, as I read Psalm 143, the Holy Spirit said to me, "It is impossible for you to stand there and plead your case within three minutes." Even criminals get more than three minutes to present themselves before the court and judges, but I'm going to do the best I can. So I have been reaching out to PEA since October in reference to my concerns. There was like a mix-up with telephone numbers, so that's why we didn't make good contact. I know we are supposed to make the days count, but I want you to know that I was up under a whole lot of stress, and I started counting the days. And I have a calendar here where I did that, and it was the stress that I was going through at Garner Elementary. So there were three things, the termination, that is before you today, and the language that is in the contract, her constant threats to me about me being a probationary employee and that she had the power and the authority, she could terminate me at any time, and nobody would say anything. And that happened on more than one occasion. And then there was an issue of the bonus. Again, I see my time is nearing the end. I've done this for 26 years. I retired in 2013. I came back in 2016 and, you know, spent a whole lot of my time and energy focusing on children and their well-being, and I didn't get that same treatment. I have more to say, but that's all. My time is up.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I apologize. Could you give me your name again, please?
Anjanetta Sanchez.
Sanchez. Mr. Wilson, could I ask you a question? Does Sanchez also have the opportunity to have an administrative hearing?
I don't believe so. As a probationary employee, it's, there's not the expectation of continued employment that a regular employee has, so there's no right to a hearing.
Thank you.
And see, that's the problem that I have, because I worked for Polk County School Board for 20-plus years, and then I retired. And so, am I considered an initial employee, or am I considered a rehire? And in that case, if I was considered an initial employee, why didn't I get that $4,000 bonus that they gave to the teachers at the school? She said I wasn't going to get the bonus, and I did not get the bonus. So what am I?
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. The only thing I can advise you would be to talk to the folks after the meeting.
Okay. Which folk?
It would be Mr. Bird, Mr. Hill, not Mr. Bird. I looked right at you, and the superintendent always sits there, so Mr. Hill.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Fields?
For Mr. Wilson. So because she was a probationary employee, she doesn't have any recourse as far as a hearing. What about a grievance hearing? Is that the same, one of the same?
Yes, ma'am. I believe those are the two options an employee has under the collective bargaining agreement. But for a probationary employee, those don't exist. The hearing right is not available.
And I would imagine that when we hire employees, we basically tell them that they are on probation and give them the ramifications of what that means and all that stuff, correct?
It's in the contract they sign, and it's in the statute, and it's pretty well established.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I have a question for Mr. Wilson as well. When this happens, when employees retire and come back again, and if their contracts are not renewed or they're let go, is there a time period before they can be rehired again in the district?
I don't believe so, so long as it wasn't some sort of disciplinary hearing, there might be a restriction, but...
There may be Florida retirement system requirements for break-in service.
Well, that may be.
After they retire and come back, there's requirements again for that break?
I'm not sure what the current rule on that is, but there may be an FRS rule requiring a break-in service.
Okay, that would be my issue.
There is a break in employment, and it's clear that you come back as like a new employee, as a probationary employee.
We've rehired employees. I just didn't know what that ruling was, but not after retirement. That might be a different FRS rule.
Probably is.
Okay.
But I would not conflate the Florida retirement system provisions with the provisions in the statute which provide for probationary employment.
Right.
I think this has been the way this district and others have implemented that statute.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Fortney?
I just wanted to clarify what probationary, that is a state guideline, statute. I just want to make sure everybody, like, we don't pick and choose.
That's great. What it means is, if you are a probationary employee, a first-time employee, returning employee with break-in service, when you come back, you have a probationary period during which time your employment can be terminated without cause. If you're terminated for cause, you have a right to due process. But under the probationary statute, you are terminated without cause. It's not saying that there was any particular problem, just for whatever reason. As John Wayne famously said, "Your fault, my fault, nobody's fault." For whatever reason, that employee can be terminated without causation and without a due process right.
And my follow-up on that is, bonus money, right? No probationary employees got that correct? I'm trying to clarify for the...
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure. Anybody?
I don't.
No, okay.
It depends on if they were...
Thank you, Stephanie.
It depends on when the contract was terminated.
Gotcha. And was an actual contract signed in this case? Or, because I haven't signed a contract since I think I started teaching 30 years ago.
No contracts have not been signed yet. They're normally signed at the end of the school year. I know that's kind of backwards, but...
Like a physical contract? I'm just trying to...
But the...
Ms. Reynolds?
I think the bonus money she was talking about was the new teachers that were going to...
Oh, okay, not best of price, okay.
Which, when we spoke at our work session a few months ago, it was discussed that if they had been in the district previously, that the state would not allow us to give it to them again, because they're returning, that it's not their first time in the district.
Otherwise, you might have people who teach a year, resign for the summer, come back in August.
Well, there's a lot of bonus money floating around, too. So it depends on which part of the money you're talking about.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
Okay, because there's another bonus as well, which I could have qualified for, based on the scores that I had the previous year with Lake Wells Charter. And I didn't get that bonus either, based on my star scores.
I would simply advise, after the meeting, to talk to Mr. Hill, and he will be able to direct you forward on some of that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And now, I'd like to call Mr. Joe Williams.
Thank you. My name is Joe Williams. My address is 716 31st Court Northwest, Warner Haven. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Sanchez, and my thing is on this, well, let me give you some background on her real quick. 26 years of impeccable service in Polk County. Teacher of the Year nominee twice. Known for having, excuse me, great test scores, very good with unruly and hard-to-manage children. She's, that's what she's known for. You know, she's exactly the type of teacher that we need in our elementary schools here in Polk County. She has the great experience. She has a passion for it. She has a heart for it. She has a heart for children. And the problem I see with this is that if anyone took the time to look at this situation, I don't know if anyone has, at this particular school, there's been some issues there in the past, this same type of issue with other employees. And I think it deserves to be looked into, and it wouldn't take much digging to find out that there is some other outland issues at this particular school that need to be addressed that's not only going to affect her, but it's also going to run other teachers off from that particular school that this county could really use. So I think just that being said needs to be looked into to save this district some heartache in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next, I would like to call Lisa Burke. Is your item pertaining to an item on the agenda?
No, on that side.
I would need to ask you to please wait then. I'm sorry, she gave them all to me, so, okay. So this is not for items. And Ms. Ann Huffman, is this for an item that is on the agenda today?
No.
No, so you'd be willing to wait then till we get to that part of the meeting?
Well, I don't have an agenda.
Okay.
No. This is on, so then, yes, but I also have my own issue that I'm going to bring to you all.
Okay, so tell me what, there's nothing on the cards, so tell me what the, what are you wanting to speak about, so I can figure out where to place you on the agenda?
I want to speak about the lack of transportation to get the meals to the children in rural areas of this county.
Okay, okay. Please hold on just a minute? Yes, ma'am. That'll be...
Can I speak then on the issue with Ms. Sanchez?
That would be appropriate to speak now, prior to us voting on it. Yes, ma'am.
Ann Huffman, 1403 Valencia Avenue, Haynes City. I am here as a concerned parent of kids that are in school, but full disclosure, I am also the Vice Mayor of the City of Haynes City. Now, my thing is, this school board complains about having a teacher shortage, but you have one that has retired and still felt enough passion and concern for these students to come back. And I understand cause, just cause, or not having it, but unless it is something that is extremely detrimental, not because a supervisor does not like someone, doesn't seem to be a valid enough reason, even on probationary. So if that is what the rule is, it needs to be looked at again, there should be some cause. You cannot just get rid of teachers that are effective, that have a way to communicate with children who lack home discipline, who don't really respect anyone, but they respect her. We need her in the classroom. We do not need her sitting at home. So either you have a shortage, or you have a preference to who you allow your principals to hire and retain based on how they like them or they dislike them. So at that point, it is not about the students first. It's about that principal and who her preference of people is. I ask you all to make a vote to bring her back to the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huffman. Ms. Fortney?
I agree with Ms. Huffman. I know we have a teacher shortage, and if we can get one that cares in that, because I've been on the wrong side of that door a couple of times, and just because they didn't like me speaking out, standing up, I was, I felt like punished. So, thank you, Ms. Huffman.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Reynolds?
I just want to clarify with Mr. Bridges that just because they're in the probationary contract, it means that there does not have to be cause, but there still oftentimes could be cause, we just don't have... oftentimes could be cause, we just don't have, we don't list it as such because they're in the probationary contract.
Thank you.
Sorry, I know she was...
Is that, is that...
That was a question for Mr. Bridges.
I apologize. Our, our, our representative from the police department was sharing an, an item with me in the superintendent's address, so could you please request?
I just wanted to clarify that the probationary period doesn't necessarily mean that they're being let go without cause, it means that they don't, there doesn't have to be cause.
Correct. It means that no, no cause, no, no cause has to be given during the probationary period.
But there still could oftentimes be a cause.
It could be for any reason, it could be for cause. As, as I tell people, it, it, it could be because you remind me of, of my grandmother that used to send me out to the backyard to cut my own cherry limb. You know, it could be for any reason or no reason at all.
But there could very well be cause.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
I think it's, it's unfortunate that we don't have anybody from HR here to answer some of these questions that's being posed. Mr. Bridges, I don't know if you have the answer to this question, but just because Ms. Anganeta is being released from Garner does not mean that she cannot apply for other positions within the county?
That is my understanding. She is being released as a probationary employee from this position. I'm, I'm not aware of any reason that she could not apply for other positions.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Miller?
I wanted to clarify that as well, I think that's what I was asking before, because we've seen this not only with teachers, but with APs that are in positions that don't move ahead. So I want to confirm that person, if it is a personnel, personnel issue or a relationship issue, this will not prohibit her employment for the next, the following year.
I, I am not aware of a prohibition for that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Reynolds?
Oh, sorry, I didn't turn my back on.
Ms. Fortney?
Okay. So, again, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Huffman, because then the rule needs to be changed. It, you know, it, it can be something as simple as who you're married to. You know, that's a lot of power over people's lives. So I, I'm all for trying to get that rule changed. And also, that probationary period, it's within a certain amount of days, I think, is not... Come on, Stephanie, help me.
The statute changed in 2011 when they changed...
Do you want to come up? Ms. Yocum, President of PEA, if you'd please join us. Thank you.
Well, I just want to add while she's doing that, I mean, it can literally say, you do not fit the mission of our school.
They, they don't have to say anything at all.
Right, I mean, it could just like...
The statute changed in 2011 when the professional services contracts, when the state legislature ended those, and if you were with a district after 2008, then you were gonna be annual contract essentially for the rest of your career. They extended the teacher probationary status from ninety days to a full school year. So if you start on the first day of pre-planning, your probationary status ends on the last working day of the school year. If you start, let's say, even like the day after pre-planning, like, let's say August 6th is that Tuesday, you're on probationary period till August 6th of the next year. So it's a full calendar year if you start after the start of the school. And we've, trust me, we have gone back and forth with, with FEA Legal. FEA Legal has been trying to fight this for years now, and under probationary, the statute, we don't have any legal ground. There is no due process. We have tried to fight for these probationary contract teachers, and legally, we, we can't because the statute would have to change in order for us to have any legal footing in this. And so the way the statute reads is that they can be let go for any, anything at all, nothing at all, and, and we have no legal recourse with that.
It truly is a no-fault statute.
Yeah. And so there are, we, we've had probationary contract teachers let go from a school, and they've, they've applied and gotten hired again in another school in, in the district or even somewhere else.
And they're happier.
And, and it could be that they're happier or they, for whatever reason, but it shouldn't hinder them being employed, even with Polk County schools or with somebody else. And so we've been trying to direct people that way, because we do need, we have a lot of instructional seats still open, so, so it shouldn't hinder anybody from...
How many, may I ask?
Um, when I checked last week, I think there were seventy-four, seventy-five just instructional. I think there's almost two hundred openings in general, but that's not just teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Yocum. Mr. Wilson?
And again, my question's for Mr. Bridges, and I'm gonna change the subject back to administrative personnel. Does the superintendent not have the authority to remove administrative personnel without cause?
Only, I, I believe that the probationary statute applies specifically to instructional personnel. I would be happy to look at that and, and see if there is, is a similar provision for administrative.
I mean, it sounds as if they have a right to a hearing, which would suggest otherwise, right?
Administrative personnel have, have an annual contract from, from the very beginning, I believe, and, and they would be entitled to due process with respect to that, to that year.
So I'm assuming then that with, without cause, they would be entitled to full payment to the end of their contract, and with cause, it would mean immediate, they would immediately have no pay. Is that, is that fair, Mr. Wilson? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the board?
Yeah, yeah, I've got some, I've got some questions.
Okay, Billy, go ahead. Mr. Townsend, you're on.
Yeah, several, several things. There's no backup that I can see describing why Ms. San, Ms. Sanchez was fired or, or cut loose. Whether or not someone has the legal authority to do it, I don't know that I'm comfortable endorsing that, you know, and, and action that has no backup. Now, now maybe, if I'm miss, I'm missing it, point it to me. You know, I, I, I agree with what Vice, Vice Mayor Huff, Huffman said on the one, one hand, and on the other hand, you know, there's not even any kind of documentation of why. You know, you know, I, I, I would like to, you know, again, I, I think I'd like to pull, I mean, I, there was another one that was supposed to be on this batch that I wanted to talk, talk about, but it's been pushed back to the, to the ne, the, the next one. I, I would like to not approve, not vote for the decision made for Ms. Sanchez on its own merit, because there aren't any.
Mr. Townsend, this is, this is Wes.
Yeah.
The reason, the reason that there is no backup is because if a cause is stated, it becomes a for-caus termination, not a probationary termination, and at that point, the individual is hearing entitled. This is a probationary termination, so no cause will be stated, period.
Uh huh.
It, it's, I know, I know that, that seems like a fine distinction, but that, that is the reason for the existence of the probationary statute.
They could essentially be highly effective in everything they've done.
That's correct.
And they could just be let go. And that's a personal discretion.
Which in itself is my problem.
Ms. Miller?
Well...
Sorry, are you done, Mr. Townsend, or?
Um, well, I guess by, can we pull the, these off individually? Is there...
Yes, I have a list here. Let, let me hear from the rest of the board, and then we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that. So hang on just a minute. Ms. Miller?
I think what we found here is a problem we've been hearing, and it's with policy or how we're, how we are even given this information with, with, in regards to these. So I'm, you know, this is two separate issues. We need to talk about how this is done and these people individually.
Right.
That's my input.
All right. Mr. Wilson?
Well, again, I'm gonna, this question's for Mr. Bridges. I think if a board member requests that an item be polled from the consent agenda, that we, we're required to do that.
Yes, it can be moved to the regular agenda for that purpose.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Fields? Your light is on.
Yes, it's been on for a minute. Personally, I think that we should have someone here from HR. My understanding is that they're on a conference call, because some of the questions that's being presented here, we don't know the answers to. And then the other thing is, I don't know if Ms. Anganeta had an opportunity to meet with folks from the union, if that, I didn't understand that, because it's, it appeared like maybe something happened and, and, and nothing was ever arranged, and I think it would have been good had she known, and apparently she does not know, that she can still apply for other positions, and she can still work for our school district. So there just seems to be a lot of confusion related to this situation. And so I am not comfortable moving forth with this one, because I want to hear from HR, is whatever I can hear from them. And maybe, maybe we can't hear anything. Maybe, as has been said, whatever's before us, we either vote it up, or we either vote it down. But it just seems to me like there's just a little bit of confusion here.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Yes, Mr. Hill?
I believe Ms. Portius is on her way, and there she is. This is an HR matter, and we need our HR expert in the room. Thank you.
And, I mean, we, could I, I'm sorry, guys, I'm not there.
I know, it's hard. Go ahead, sir.
So, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not unhappy with HR here. I mean, like, you've had some pretty extraordinary things to deal, to deal, 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 deal with. I'm, you know, you, you had other things on, on your plate. I'm just not comfortable, largely because of some of those things on the plate. I mean, making a really momentous deci, deci, decision about Ms. Sanchez's life with no, at a momentous time, with no reason whatsoever given, and I understand the, the legal reason. I mean, I, I, I understand. I'm just not comf, comfortable doing that. And I guess my question is, can we pull her case off individually and consider it? Like, can, can, can each one of these lines, i, is this all one big agenda item, or can we pull individual cases off?
No. What we would need to do is probably pull it off of consent agenda, onto the regular agenda, which we had done before, and then discuss each one individually. That's the, I believe that's the proper thing to do. Is that correct, Mr. Bridges?
I'm gonna clean up the pot tub.
Okay, what I was saying was, in order to look at each of these individually, we would need to pull it back, it was on the regular agenda, pull it off of consent, onto regular, to where we could talk about each item and vote on them.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So let's give Mr., let's give Ms. Portius an opportunity to speak, and then we can discuss how we want to move forward.
I apologize for not being here. Good afternoon, or good evening. I apologize for not being here earlier. I was on a conference call regarding the DOE information. Nonetheless, I was listening in and out. I heard some questions, but I didn't hear all of them, so if you can, just ask your questions again, and I'll be happy to answer everything for you.
Who wants to? Okay, so we had a young lady who is currently here in the room. Her name is Ann, Ann Janetta Sanchez.
Okay.
And she spoke very eloquently to the fact that she was being dismissed during her probationary period.
Mm-hmm.
And some of the board members had questions such as, what does that mean if she gets released from school X in Polk County, for whatever reason, because it's probation, it can be without cause?
Correct.
Can she apply to work at school Y in Polk County?
So, yes, here in Polk County, we have what is essentially known as, or we call it a two-strike rule, meaning within your initial one hundred and ninety-seven days, you can be terminated for any reason absent one that is illegal. Okay? And so once you are terminated, as you said, at school X, then you can go to school Y and be hired within that original one ninety-seven, or you can start over in the other school year, in the next school year. But many of our probationary teachers that are released...
Yes.
...the first time do go back, and they are rehired a second time at another school.
Okay, so then my follow-up question is, is this individual in strike one or two? Can she come back?
Um...
Are we not allowed to discuss that?
I'm not sure of the particulars of Mrs. Sanchez's case.
Particulars?
But I imagine if she is in strike one, and I think she is in strike one, actually, because I think Mr. Warren talked to her and advised her that our recruiting department would help her locate another position.
Another position.
And that's generally what happens when a person is released within their original strike-one probationary one hundred and ninety-seven days.
Okay. Let me, if you'll stay right there, we have some board member questions. Ms. Fortney?
So, we are, that's a district decision to have two strikes? That's not statute?
Correct. The statute just says that the teacher has one hundred and ninety, I'm sorry, that the district has one hundred and ninety-seven days to release the teacher on probation without cause.
And how do we hire probationary teachers? How do, how are they not hired like beginning teachers or experienced teacher? What qualifies? Are all of our teachers hired as probationary, basically? Is that what it boils down to?
Yes. All teachers are hired as a probationary teacher regardless of the previous experience they bring in.
And that is state.
Correct. So what happens is, if, let's say I move from Pasco County to Polk County, and I want to teach, and I bring in twenty years of experience, we'll place you on the appropriate salary level, but you start over. You don't have the annual contract that you may have had, or the professional services contract that you may have had in Pasco County. You start over here, and you get a new contract. And so after the one ninety-seven, on your, essentially one ninety-eighth day, it converts to an annual contract, and then you get other protections under the law.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Fortney? Ms. Fields?
So, Ms. Tedra, once someone is released from being on probation, and they've had their first strike, so they still have another strike, what support do we provide to help them find placement elsewhere? Do we provide support?
So as we did with Ms. Sanchez, generally what we do is connect them with our recruiting department. We'll talk to them about what locations they want, what placements they want, meaning if you want an elementary, primary elementary or an intermediate elementary, do you want secondary, so middle or high school, and if so, what, what subject? We also will work with them to interview with the principal. So let's say you're at Portius Elementary, and Tedra's the principal, Brian will call and say, hey, I have a teacher, she was let go one time. If you want to time, talk, talk to the previous principal, you can. Here's what we have on her. And so we at least try to facilitate that, and try to let the second principal that could potentially hire them know exactly what the case is. And so that way, they understand what they're getting, and the, the teacher understands what the, what's up for grabs as well.
And that process has started?
Uh, I'm not sure. I believe so. I know that we did give the name to the recruiting department, yes.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other question, I think Mr. Wilson answered for me, when someone is on probation and they don't have the right for a hearing, that includes a grievance hearing as well? Are you understanding, she doesn't have the rights, the right to present her case to anyone because she's on probation? If she and, and the principal were at odds, whatever, but whatever the reasons may be, she doesn't have any recourse to talk to someone about her concerns with the principal present? Does that make sense?
I think I understand your question. So generally, terminations go to DOA, and those terminations are for cause. If she is terminated, in this case, if the individual is terminated under a probationary status, not really, I, I guess you would not have a place, quote unquote, to go. However, the contract does allow for grievances. We've never heard of grievance for a, for a probationary teacher. That has not been our current, that is not our current practice, and, and I don't believe that it has been our past practice ever, as long as the probationary language has been around. I don't, I don't believe so. I, I'm guessing, though, if we do have a teacher that is unhappy, many of our teachers reach out to us. They'll reach out to the HR department and say, hey, I'm, I'm having a problem with Tedra. I think there may be a personality conflict. What are my options? And we'll advise them at that point in time. Not only that, they are also in contact with the recruiting department, because many times, our new teachers, the first point, or the first person that they meet are our recruiters when they're out on the road, and so they develop a relationship with the recruiters. And so they'll say, Jessica or Caroline, hey, I'm really having an issue with Tedra. Help me. What do you think I can do in this situation? And so it may not necessarily be a grievance per se, but we do kind of do some hand-holding along the way. However, if we notice that it is something, or Jessica and Caroline both know that if it's something illegal, they will come and talk to myself or Mr. Warren, and then we will address it with the principal and the regional.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Questions?
Ms., yes, go ahead. Let me get Ms. Fortney, sir, and I'll be right back to you. Ms. Fortney, go ahead.
The, thank you. This... The, thank you. The, this, though, I think, is, I'm sorry that you have to be the poster child for what I've asked for, for a year, but it seems like we can track this turnover, and if it's consistently at the same schools with the same leadership, that we would look at that. And, you know, because I'm quite sure, and I'll, I'll use my Spessard Holland, I mean, you're, people dying to get into that school to teach. You know what I mean? I just, I feel like it's, it should be easier to, to do that. That was my comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Reynolds?
I think Mr., Mr. Tedra.
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Townsend, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, to, just a very practical que- question. During the shutdown, for however long it lasts, are principals allowed to hire? I mean, is there any kind of hiring freeze? Are, are principals hiring?
So, there was a hiring freeze that I actually put out on Thursday for, last Thursday for this last Friday. So, I put out, I put, well, let me say this, I noticed the hiring freeze on the 12th. Principals were aware of it from last week as well, or the previous week, and it was supposed to go into effect on the 13th. However, given the shutdown and everything, that all of our deadlines and dates are currently on hold.
So, but, but, I guess we, we just heard that, that, you know, Ms. Sanchez's option is to look for, be helped by the recruiter to look for another school, but if there's not any option to go to another school in a, in a practical way, in the, in the next however many months or weeks, you know, that, I guess, that's, that's what I'm trying to fig- to figure out, is, is there any possibility of her being hired, or is she just going to ride this out?
Well, right now, we're, as you know, we're in uncharted territory, given the shutdown and the nature of the shutdown. And so, what we will likely do is contact her at some point in time. I know that we'll, we are still having virtual recruiting fairs, and so, we will contact her at some point in time to ensure that she does get placed somewhere.
Secondly, I agree with this, Ms. Fortney. I, you know, I think principals really, I mean, you give them tremendous power of, over a person's life, and, and, you know, it's, I, I don't have the records on this particular principal, but, you know, it's, that power needs to be respected. And I don't hear enough, I don't think, about us making sure that power is respected. I mean, the, the, the principals tend to sort of get a, get a pass, it seems, it seems to me, at least as from a board, board member point of view. But that's, I mean, we're, that, that's something to deal with down, down the road. You know, I guess, again, my, my most practical consideration is, can I vote on Ms. Sanchez's case individually, and then us do, do the rest of them as one big one? Or, or, or not, I guess, is, is, is the procedural que- question that I have.
Okay, so the procedural thing to do would be to pull this item, which is currently back on consent agenda, and move it to regular. And then we could vote on them individually if the board chooses. Ms. Fortias wanted to reply to you.
Mr. Townsend, you said that principals get a pass. I'm going to have to disagree there. With most of, if not all of, the probationary dismissals, they come through our office. We help draft the letters, we review the facts, and we look at everything, because we know that, number one, that there is someone's livelihood there. And so, the main question that we ask, once they are terminated, if that's the, if the principal does choose to follow that path, and we agree with them, is, do you think they're good for students as well? And so, that is done before we then recommend them to the recruiting department. If the answer is no, they're not good for students, then we don't want them in front of any other student at that point. But I don't, I wouldn't say that principals get a pass. A lot of times, we have asked them to work with the teacher, for whatever reason, or we have pushed back on a lot of the recommendations that they've made if we feel that they don't have enough facts for anything. If it's just simply, you know, Tedra's coming in late, and I really don't necessarily like her red shirt, well, quite frankly, that's not enough. What else can we do? Right? What else are you, what else is there? And so, we do look at and review the facts to at least ensure that there is a viable cause for termination.
Do you, do you feel like, I mean, that's been done in this case, and you feel like there is a vi- viable cause? You, you reviewed it?
Pardon me, Mr. Townsend, I'm going to interrupt. We, no cause may be given for a probationary employee termination. If you, if a cause is articulated, it becomes a termination for cause, the individual's entitled to a hearing before DOA. If you're a probationary employee, you are simply released under your probationary period, and no cause is given.
Ms. Reynolds?
I think this whole conversation is, I mean, we have to, I understand where you're, what you're saying, Billy, that our principals are making these decisions, but I also think we've put our principals in a place to make these decisions, and we have to trust that they're making them with the best interest of students. And that if they're releasing a probationary teacher, I don't think there's a principal out there that would rather have a substitute coming in than a teacher in the classroom. If they're releasing a teacher, particularly at this point in the year, they're releasing them because there is an issue. So I think that, looking at this list, I'll be upholding these recommendations that I just think that we need to take into consideration, that I can't think of a single principal that would want to not have a teacher instead of a substitute unless there's a reason.
Okay, so, there's been a lot of discussion on this item, and I personally feel, at this point in time, that probably the best protocol would be to move this item from our consent to regular, and then we can discuss it. Regarding the individual who's present tonight, I, I would think, how do I put this? If we pull it off and individually vote and reinstate you, you're still at that school where you may not want to be. I'm not sure how that's going to help after hearing everybody. I'm just, I'm really not sure. With the two-strike thing, if you have an opportunity to work someplace, maybe in underneath a different leadership team, is what I'm hearing, somebody can correct me, that might be a better option. I don't know how that happens if we vote differently than what was recommended tonight. I do know that, Bishop Mincy, did you want to come up to the podium?
(inaudible)
I need you to go to the podium, so everybody can hear.
(inaudible)
He's been patiently waiting.
Bishop Mincy, you know me.
We know you.
Ann Janetta called me about this situation. The truth is the only thing going to set us free. The truth. She called me. She had a issue with the principal, and it didn't just not get started. Tell the truth. It didn't just not get started. It started in college. She told me, the Lord told her, don't go to that school. She went against the will of God, so she got to suffer the consequences that come to her. She shouldn't have not went. She had some other schools that she could have went to. Whatever happened with her and the, the principal happened. Now she's in another situation. She is subject to the principal, who is her authority. Probation means just what it says. I done worked on jobs that say you are here for a period of time, and if you do anything or anything online of what we line up with, then you can be terminated, and I don't have to tell you why I let you go. That ain't no new history. That's been going on as long as the world been, I'm quite sure, and people, and employing people.
Yes, sir.
So, all I'm saying, the only thing is the truth need to be told. And the, the, I talked to the regional, I'm in it, I'm in it, I'm in it. I went to the regional, I asked the regional about it, she told me that the opportunity was given that she could go to another school. She told me the same thing. So why come here and waste all of this time and energy over something that you were told what you could do? It's the trick of the devil, that's what it is. And it's trying to divide, we already in trouble, the, the whole country in a mess, and we sitting here arguing and fussing over something that don't make no sense. It's a waste of your time. And all needed to be done was all she had to do was go and to her another school, and went there. First thing, I would never, I would have never, never went to that school, knowing the situation. You know. She knew that that was a problem with her and this lady. Why did you go there?
Thank you, Bishop Mincy. Mr. Townsend, did you have something else to say?
No, I just think all of that was inappropriate. We're, we're, we are elected officials trying to do our duty and think, think this through. I just want to be very, very clear about, 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 about that. I take what I do, I take what I'm elected to do seriously.
Okay.
You're, so.
Let, let, let's move forward, then. Do I have a consensus of the, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fields, my little court is right over your name. I apologize.
No, you're fine.
Go ahead.
Bishop Mincy has the same right that everybody else have to come up here for three minutes and have his comments. Now, we might not agree with what he said, but he has that right. And we can't censor what he says, nor can anybody censor what we as board members say, because sometimes we say crazy stuff, too. So, I think we need to go on and go to the next item.
Madam Chair, I have a point of order, please.
Hold on. Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
So, we agreed to operate by Robert's rules of order. If, if a school board member asks to have something removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, there's no vote, vote required. That should, that happens automatically under Robert's rules of order, where we can have further discussion about the item. And I have some very specific thoughts about this, but it seems to me that we should be doing that when we get to the point of voting on them.
Okay, so, Mr. Townsend, are you asking then? I will go ahead and move it to the regular agenda and move on?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. We got a lot going on at the state level, so.
You know, you know, I, yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine. I'll, I'll rescind that. If, if, if nobody else want, wants it, I'll, I'll rescind it. It's fine.
Well.
What now? We're, so we're gon-
He's rescinding it.
I'll, I'll rescind it. I'll, I'll rescind it. If, if, like, I mean, it's fine. I mean, there's, there's, there's things we gotta do.
Okay. So you do not want me to pull it off consent and put it on regular to vote on individually? Do I understand you correctly?
What, I, I think, I think, I think the easiest thing to do here actu- actually is to put it on regular.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
As, as, as the whole thing, don't pull it off individually. I, I'll just vote no against the whole thing.
Okay.
And we'll just go.
Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Wilson?
So, if we're not moving it to the regular agenda, then I have some comment.
We are. He just said he wanted to.
We are, we are.
We are. We're moving.
What I'm, what I'm not going to do is ask to pull pieces of it out, off. We'll just vote the whole thing up, up or down, from my point of view. Like, because there's, there's like eight people on it.
Okay. There is. Let me, let me, when we get to that point, let's, let's talk about it at that time. Okay. So, moving forward, is there anyone else that has, wants to come up and speak to an item that is currently on our agenda? Anybody else? Okay, come forward, please.
Hi. I'm Molly Aches. My address is 4140 Packard Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, 34772. I'm Michael Aches' wife. I just wanted to address Mr. Wilson's question about why would he want, why would we want to delay it? One is that he is seeking medical treatment right now, and he cannot be here tonight. And just like Ms. Sanchez was able to present her case, he has not been able to talk to the board at all, and he would just like you to hear from him. And so, that's all we're asking for, is that if you would please find it in your heart to just move it to April 28th, because he cannot be here right now. We, I totally understand that Mr. Wilson, the attorney, said he has a right to file for appeal. He, he will do that, but he, he would love to not have to go that route. He, he loves his job, he loves the students, he loves Polk County, and he, he's, like I said, he's seeking medical help right now, but he would truly just love for a chance for you guys to hear from him. And he cannot be here tonight. There's no way, and that's why our daughter and I are here, to try to ask that for him. Otherwise, he would be here himself. But he's not able to be, but he would be able to be at the April 28th meeting. But why I'm asking it is, I understand that there's the appeal process, but he has not been able to stand in front of the board, like Ms. Sanchez did, and let you hear from him. So that's my request, and I know you guys have a lot on your plate, and it is a very tough time. And Michael did receive his last paycheck, check on February 28th, so it is a very stressful time for all families and for our family as well. And I'm just asking for some compassion, and that, that's the reason for the 28th, just to give him a chance to come and speak to you guys. That's it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You want me to stay, or are we good?
I think that's great. Thank you so much for speaking. Okay, is there anyone else?
I think Don has some.
Did you want to come forward, Ms., Mr. Wilson?
I'll address that issue on behalf of the superintendent.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Not meaning to be technical, but what, the hearing is not an appeal. The hearing hasn't taken place yet. And it would be inappropriate for, knowing that there's going to be a hearing, for it to be argued before you in advance of that. It will come back before you, if that's the way things work out, with a full record of the case, and the parties can argue it then.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anyone else want to come before the board?
I don't need to go up here to say this. All I'm saying is, he is seeking medical treatment, and he cannot be here, just like it's everyone's right to come up here and speak. He physically cannot be here. And we're asking you for some compassion for our family.
Thank you, Ms. Aches. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, there's no one else, correct? Okay, the next item is, board members, we-
For this.
Yes.
At the end.
At the end, we'll tell you. I'll look at you and wink, how's that? I'll call you up, Ms. Huffman, I still have your card. Yes, ma'am. The next thing, board members, is we need to approve three sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the February 11th, 2020, school board work session. The chair will entertain a motion now to accept the February 11th, 2020, school board work session minutes as printed.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The second set of minutes is for the February 25th, 2020, school board meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the February 25th, 2020, school board meeting minutes as printed.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The third set of minutes is for the February 25th, school board work session. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the February 25th, 2020, school board work session minutes as printed.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I would like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda. Now, did somebody, Yvette or Susan, did one of you pull that item off of the consent agenda to the regular agenda? I don't have it up, so that's why I'm asking. If you'll move it, and if, I'm assuming that number stayed the same.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So now, I'm asking for approval of the consent agenda. The next item is to approve the consent agenda for today, March 17th, 2020. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the March 17th, 2020, consent agenda as printed.
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next, we have our new administrator announcements. The next item is new administrator announcements, and Ms. Byrd, welcome back.
Thank you.
Do we have any announcements today?
We do have one. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Heather Jenkins as senior director of finance. Ms. Jenkins was previously the director of budget in Manatee County School District in 2018. She was promoted to chief financial officer. She brings what, brings to us over 18 years of extensive experience and expertise in governmental finance management experience, business development leadership, strategic planning, and accounting knowledge. Again, I would like to introduce to you and say congratulations to Ms. Heather Jenkins.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Madam Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to be your new senior- Thank you for the opportunity to be your new Senior Finance Director. I live in Polk County, my son goes to school in Polk County, and I'm very excited to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Madam.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I say something real quick? I just wanted to say, Ms. Jenkins comes very highly recommended by someone I know in the Manatee County system, so I just, just wanted to throw that out there. I'm, I'm, I'm excited to ha, to have her.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes our new administrators for this evening.
Wonderful. Congratulations and welcome aboard. We're excited to have you. Okay, next we come to our regular agenda. The first item we have under Administration School Board is R-30, Nominee to the Attendance Boundary Committee. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Justin Sharpless to serve on the Attendance Boundary Committee pursuant to School Board Resolution 2019-2020-07.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
Madam Chair, I, I received a call from Mr. Sharpless, and he was interested.
We need a motion and a second that we can discuss.
So moved.
I'm gonna make the motion.
Oh.
So, I, I got a call from Mr. Sharpless, and he indicated an interest in, in getting involved with the school district. And I mentioned the Attendance Boundary Committee, and he seemed quite interested in that. And before I make the motion, I'd just like to share a little bit of his background very quickly. Mr. Sharpless is an Assistant Professor at Weber International University, where he serves as Agricultural Studies Department Chair. He has a master's degree in agricultural education and leadership from the University of Missouri, and is currently pursuing his, pursuing his doctorate from the University of Missouri. He has taught at both the college, high school, and middle school levels, and serves on numerous committees in his, in his community. And it's with, it's my pleasure to nominate Justin Sharpless to the Attendance Boundary Committee. Thank you.
We need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
The second item under Business Services, General Items, is the Polk County Public Schools Health Plan. And the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Polk County Public Schools State Filing of the 2019 Health Plan for Florida Statute 112.08.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a mo, motion and a second. Mr. Peron, would you like to come before the board?
Good evening. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that normally we do this back-to-back, and we didn't have a workshop today. So every year we do this filing. If you recall, two years ago, I brought to the board's attention that the health plan was in pretty bad shape. And last year, and we didn't even file that year. And then last year, we filed something new where we went with a five-year plan to get us to a positive, because we were running in the negative with our health plan. So what I'm, excuse you, recommending is that we, we're gonna do a, we're gonna do a PowerPoint at the next workshop. But we're gonna, we need to file this prior to.
Thank you, Mr. Peron.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's perfect. Thank you so much. And I'm sure the board members have had a chance to review it, so.
Yeah, the PowerPoint was on the workshop.
Right. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, board members? Seeing none, I would like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next item is the one that we pulled from consent. Under Human Resource Services Recommendations, we have R-32, Recommendations for Administrative and Instructional Personnel Actions. So I would like to ask, what is the pleasure of the board? Do we want a motion and a second, and then discuss it?
Yes. Move for approval?
Second.
Okay. Now, discussion, anyone? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As it relates to Ms. Sanchez, it seems to me that there was clearly a personality conflict. I, I, regardless of who, who was exacerbating the situation, and it's my understanding that she will have an opportunity to apply somewhere else, and I think that's appropriate. I think that, you know, our principals should have a significant amount of control over their schools, and if, if there are concerns with an employee, what we offer in this district is an opportunity to work somewhere else, and I think that's, I think that's perfectly appropriate. As it relates to Dr. Aches, he is, he is in the process of going through the hearing process as it's laid out, and that will eventually become, come before the board. And as I understand it, he'll have an opportunity to address us at that time. And so for those reasons, I will be voting for these recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Fields?
So I'm not sure how you, and I say you, I'm, I guess I need to reference to myself. I don't, I don't know how I would not be in support of the recommendation from the superintendent concerning Ms. Anginetta because of the fact that it is a probationary position, and it is a state law. And so how do you vote against something that is a law? I mean, I don't understand that. I think that there should be confirmation that we, and Ms. Tedra said that someone was working with Ms. Anginetta to find placement for her. I also believe, and I don't know how that would happen, is that we need to have a place where someone can go when they are at odds with their boss when they are on probation. And I think Ms. Tedra said, when she referenced one of the answers, that they try to listen and maybe at some point in time mediate. I don't understand, and I said this earlier, if she was trying to get assistance from PEA and get an understanding on what her next option would be, and that didn't work out, I don't understand that. And maybe, maybe I won't understand it. As it relates to Dr. Aches, if he didn't have an opportunity to come before us at a later time, I could see him coming today and having comments. But today would not be the appropriate time, in my opinion, for him to bring comments to us. It would be after we have heard from the administrative judge. So I might not like the way that this is, it's, it's coming down, but legally, I think that as a school board member and following the law, I'm not gonna break the law for anybody. That I will be supporting this for right now. And maybe at some point in time, we can do a better job of making sure that when people don't have placement beyond their probationary period, that they understand what their rights are, and that they can go to another school and have another opportunity to, to work within our school district. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Fortney?
I thought, Ms. Cunningham, you brought up a valid point, because if we did that and she goes back to the same situation, you know, and then you get two strikes, then you have no other opportunity.
Exactly.
That was a valid, valid point. But I still think we need to look overall at our shortage, as Commissioner Huffman said earlier, and how we, you know, give me the top 10 schools that don't have a high turnover, you know, and what are they doing? I would love, I would love to bottle some of my principals. I'm in District 3, so I'm very fortunate, but, because our leadership is very, very good over in Bartow and Mulberry, et cetera, Fort Meade. But, you know, I'm with Ms. Fields also. I'm not breaking the law for anybody, so. Thank you, Ms. Fields.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, again, going back to the Ms. Sanchez situation, she clearly was, had tremendous experience and was very well respected. And, you know, sometimes it's just not a good fit, and we need to find a better fit. I'm hoping that we can do that. I'm hoping she'll choose to stay with our school district.
And let me echo some of the comments already made by fellow board members. I will be supporting this because I feel like she has another, Ms., I'm talking about Ms. Sanchez. She would have the opportunity to move to a different place. And the fact that we've already, are beginning to start to talk about putting her in touch with one of our recruiters, I think she's, knowing her personally, I think she's a wonderful lady. And sometimes, we all know, we've worked under somebody that things just didn't work out. And this may be a true opportunity for her to have a fresh start in a school in which she could truly use her passion and her love of teaching and positively impact kids. So I look at it as something, I always try to look at things in a positive vein, and I firmly believe that this may be an opportunity for her to move forward. So I, too, will be supporting this item. Mr. Townsend, were you trying to say something earlier?
Yeah. Yeah, just, I mean.
Sure. Yes.
This, this would be a different vote if we weren't on the edge of like, an incredibly important economic time. And, you know, I'm, I'm gonna vote no on this, just, just because what I support is a one-month delay of this, just to allow the federal government to do what it's gonna do, purely on a humanitarian basis for everybody. Individually, I don't think Dr. Aches' case merits that, nor do any of the other cases except for, for Ms. Sanchez's. So, like, in the issue, the issue around hers is, is more complicated. So it's just easier for me to vote no on, on this, based on the context of what we're, we're facing. I mean, she's, I mean, I, I think I just heard there's a hiring freeze. I don't think anybody's gonna hire her if there's a hiring freeze and we're, and we're on a shutdown. You know, I, I think there are, you know, this is an extraordinary time. I mean, people talk about setting precedents, but there is no precedent for this. And that's why I'm gonna vote no. It does, doesn't matter, because, I mean, there, there's not support for it, but that's, we can come back to the, the, the issue of, of probationary teachers sometime this summer when.
Sure.
Hopefully, we're back in, in office.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Any other comments, board members? Okay, so, did we get a, we had a motion and a second, is that correct? Any further discussion? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve, excuse me, we have a motion and a second. I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, in favor of approving the recommendation for administrative and instructional personnel actions, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay. Do y'all have that? Thank you. The motion carries six to one. The next item under Learning, New Textbook Adoption is R-33, Hope Instructional Material Adoption. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the opportunity for public review and comment on the Hope Instructional Materials Adoption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, next we move into our public hearing. I would like to recess the school board meeting and open up the public hearing. At this time, I would like to call the public hearing for March 17th, 2020, to order. Item R-34 is the adoption of the Davenport Elementary School Boundaries. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward to address item 34 on our public hearing agenda today? If so, please come forward and, and give us your name and address for the record, and you will each have three minutes to speak.
Absolutely, too much time. My name is Don Brown. I live at 3738 Madberry Circle, Lakeland, Florida. I am Chair of the Attendance Boundary Committee. And if there are any members here, would you please stand? Have our Vice Chair, Mr. Travis Keys, here. Now, I know that we have a new appointment. I look forward to that individual joining us. There's a tremendous amount of work. I was listening at what was going on in the previous discussion. I suggest that all of us take the opportunities to read the 48 Laws of Power, and we'll have a grip on what's really going on, and I'm serious about that. Now, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Travis Keys, who was very instrumental when I was out of town, who visited the Davenport area and chaired the community meeting, and he can give you some more details. But before I yield to him, we went through various options. We went through actually five options, and we settled with option four. I believe that you all may have had the opportunity to look at option four. We did our due diligence. We, I would like to thank the staff who worked very hard and diligently with us and gave us the type of guidance we really needed, because this is new to us. And I appreciate everyone who had a hand in this. Mr. Travis, would you please come forward, please?
I'm not sure I can do this in a minute and 24, so you might have to reset the time for me.
No, you each get, you each get three minutes, so it's okay.
Travis Keys, 2843 Ponview Drive in Haynes City, Florida. So serving as Vice Chair of the Attendance Boundary Committee, we started meeting in October and had various meetings discussing options, as Mr. Brown said. We had five options on the table. Immediately got rid of one of those options, it's not feasible. And through many questions and discussions, decided that option four was the option that we were going to move forward with. We then had a meeting with the community in February, which was very well attended. I will say that there was probably about 65 to 70 members of the community in attendance, and posed many, many questions. We didn't get any feedback negatively from the recommendations. Everybody kind of, you know, said, okay, this is a reasonable thing that we're trying to do. And I will say now, kudos to the board members and also to Polk County Public Schools and the staff for making this committee. I think the transparency that was shown to the community speaks volumes on what we're trying to do here. So with that being said, the committee has recommended option four to the school board. We're recommending that, and I believe Mrs. Usher has, like I said, Mr. Brown said, has given you all those details on that. And again, I just want to thank you guys for, for putting that forward and making the committee possible. This is a very good thing, and I think it's, like I said, speaks volumes to the transparency the board has, and the community is fully behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keys and Mr. Brown. We appreciate you all being here this evening. I will also say for the record, I've spoken to the principals in the Northeast there that are affected by this. Two of our area schools will be giving up units to go to Davenport Elementary, and they are also very much in favor of, of the boundaries that have been selected. And they both gave me their blessing to move forward. So with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the proposed, I guess it's proposed option four, for the Attendance Boundary for Davenport Elementary School to be implemented for the start of school in August of 2020.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Madam Chair, since this is in your district, I'm looking to you for advice. Are you, are you happy with this?
Yes, yes, I'm thrilled. I, unfortunately, February 6th was my daughter's birthday, so I was not able to be there. But I heard wonderful comments from everyone, and, and my greatest concern, of course, was for the principals and to find out how that would work. And Ms. Townley's done, done a wonderful job communicating to everybody and the community. And I'm just really thrilled that you all were gracious enough to be here tonight, because to me, the most important part of this process that we do at any time is to involve our community and find out what we feel works best for everyone. And there's lots of questions and all, I get that. But the fact that we had such a great public meeting and had comments, and that y'all were able to come tonight and give us that feedback says a lot, so, thank you, so, yes.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I just want one more comment.
Sure.
The representation of, from staff from Polk County Schools that were there at that meeting.
Yes.
Was phenomenal. We had two laptops set up. The individuals from the community were able to go and see if they were affected by some of these recommendations, and they were told specifically on their address if they were gonna be moved or go to the new Davenport school or not. And like you said, Mrs. Townley. Davenport school or not. And like you said, Mrs. Townley was there. It was just wonderful support, and I can't say enough on how well this process has gone thus far. And, and again, commend you guys for, for recommending that. It's been absolutely fabulous.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. And I know I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Usher for all her time and talent and all the folks, and I'm sure there were many others. But thank you so much, 'cause it takes a village to raise these children. So, Ms. Fields.
I wanted to know, and Ms. Byrd, probably can answer this, do we have minutes or notes from the meeting that was held?
Yes, we do.
Is it possible for us to?
We can get those for you.
Receive that, please. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who participated. Thank you to the members of the attendance boundary committee, and thank you, gentlemen, for your leadership.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Fields?
Oh, no, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so at this point, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor of the option four for the attendance boundary for Davenport Elementary School, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. At this time, I would like to close the public hearing and reconvene the school board meeting. Next, we have our superintendent's report. Mrs. Byrd, do you have an update for us today?
Yes, I do.
You didn't say that with excitement now.
Well, the first thing I'd like to say, as a former elementary school principal, the probationary status of teachers have been around since I was a principal, which was quite a while ago. One thing that we do work to do when there's not a proper fit after you release a probationary teacher is to try to see if you can reassign them somewhere else after that. So I just wanted to make that statement, because our principals do a very good job at what they do. I stand behind their work. And I know when they make those decisions, they're not making them because of a personality, they're making them in the best interest of children. So I do stand behind my principals in the work that they're doing within their schools. To go with that, I would like to say I was on a conference call, quite lengthy, with all the college presidents, superintendents, commissioner of education, and chancellor. I would like to announce that at this time, all K-12 schools will remain closed until April 15th. There are a lot of unanswered questions right now that we'll be working towards. Also, what was stated in there when they actually told us in the call was also regarding board meetings, they're asking to postpone. The CDC is requiring, they're strongly, strongly saying we have to adhere to CDC states, no meetings convening of 10 or more within that. So all meetings at this time will be postponed. They will be getting back and letting us know if those meetings can be either virtually or some sort. So we're looking for guidance on, on that. All statewide assessments will not occur. So there'll be no school grades for the 1920 school year. All statewide assessments are canceled at this time. I'm trying to go through my notes. So there's a lot going on. We're gonna reconvene our team again, and to continue looking at our plans of how we're feeding our students and the different things that we're doing, and what we're doing with our teachers at that point, as far as professional development. We do have some things that we've been providing, preparing, that's coming out in our instructional continuity plan. But you're probably already getting it. If you're not paying attention to your phones, you're probably getting a lot of phones, emails, and texts. I will tell you that there was a caption put on the Bay News 9 that said, "All K-12 schools will, were canceled for the remainder of the year." That was incorrect. So, they were correcting that. We're close to April 15th until.
April 15th.
15.
I wrote 13.
April 15th. So all school board meetings at this time, we're gonna have to postpone all meetings until further notice, and I'll let you know the guidance that we get. There's a lot of the information. I'll send you an update from my notes page, and we'll let you all know what's gonna be happening. So I think that's gonna conclude my report for now, and I'll be updating you and keeping you abreast of what's happening throughout as I've been doing. Thank you.
That'll be great. And the only thing I'd like to request, 'cause I've been trying to update board at the same time as you and I speak and so forth, I'd like to request from here forward, if you'd be so kind when you do your updates, to include board members and everybody, so we're getting one update, whether it's daily, weekly, whatever. You know what I'm saying? If you could just include school board, all staff, so that we're all hearing it kind of at the same time and dealing with it and so forth. So I'd, I'd appreciate that help. Thank you. Well, that was great news. It's okay, it is what it is. It is what it is. Let's move forward. Next, we have our attorney's report, which will be given by Mr. Bridges. If you'd like to.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead and update us. Yes, sir.
Yes, just briefly, I provided you with a memorandum requesting approval to modify the appraisal agreement that we have with Nationwide Public Insurance Adjusters, Inc. There, your appraiser in the Hurricane Irma appraisal process. And in advance of our global mediation conference in April, the appraiser would like to complete the inspection process, the appraisal process for five additional campuses throughout the county, and the estimated, the cost that he gave us for that is not to exceed $250,000. So I, I provided an amendment to the contract for that purpose, and if you would be so kind.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. So, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the First Amendment to the appraisal agreement between the school board and Nationwide Public Insurance Adjusters, Inc., increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $250,000 to a total of $750,000. This will provide for the completion of the appraisal process at five additional campuses ahead of mediation scheduled for April 6th and 7th, 2020. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Thank you, ma'am. And if I might prevail upon you, before you leave tonight, if I could get your signature and the superintendent's, then we will communicate that document to him tomorrow, and he can start right away.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'll take care of that right after the meeting. The next item on our agenda tonight is the auditor's report, which will be given by Mrs. Matthews.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our contract with Cherry Beckett has expired, so we will be issuing an RFP to select a new auditing firm for the district's annual audit, annual financial audit. Florida statute requires the school board to establish an auditor selection committee, and recent changes in that statute require a school board member to serve on the committee as chair. The other members of the auditor selection committee will come from the Polk County School Board Audit and Finance Committee. Mr. Travis Keys, who you just heard from, and Mrs. Darlene Innett have confirmed their willingness to serve on the committee. So at this time, I am requesting a school board member and an alternate to serve on the auditor selection committee as chair, and then I'm requesting school board approval to establish the Polk County School Board Auditor Selection Committee pursuant to Florida statute.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. So, board members, do we have a volunteer that would like to serve as the chairman and alternate chairman to the auditor selection committee?
I, I would like to volunteer for that position.
Okay, it's okay. All right. So, Ms. Fortney, would you like to chair it or be the alternate?
Whatever you need.
Two options.
I could chair it.
Okay, all right. So we have.
That make everybody else feel better? Because I do.
I'd be happy to serve as alternate.
And you'd be alternate? Okay. All right. So, the chair will entertain a motion now to approve board member Sarah Fortney to serve as the chairman of the auditor selection committee, and board member Lynn Wilson to serve as the alternate chairman pursuant to Florida statute 218.391. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now, the chair will entertain a motion to establish the Polk County School Board Auditor Selection Committee pursuant to Florida statute 218.391.
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Matthews.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to our board member reports. Mr. Townsend, would you like to start off this evening?
Yeah, just very briefly, for the benefit of anyone who may be listening to this, I've, I've talked about it publicly already. But the reason I'm calling in opposed to attending is I was in a hospital with my dad last week, and that hospital had a COVID case in it. It came out later. So I'm just, out of a sense of precaution, didn't, didn't, didn't want to come be present at the, the meeting. No symptoms, no, no sense of any kind of li- likelihood that I was, that I was exposed, just, just wanted to try to be prudent. And I just wanted to thank everybody for, yeah, I, I know everybody must, must be pretty tired right now. But I think what we've geared up for in the last couple, couple of days is really remarkable. I think we've been communicating very well with our employees and with the community. In fact, I think we're, we sort of, sort of a model for that. I heard from another district today that was very frustrated about the lack of what they felt like was good coordination between board and staff. So just keep, keep it up, make sure everybody's getting good rest. It's gonna be a long haul. And, you know, let's, let's just all hang in there together, and thanks for the work you've done so far.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Fortney?
Yes, first, I wanna, obviously, think the staff, et cetera. I, Dr. Snaky, I guess, is the one who sent us. We all volunteered to go and serve lunches. When I pulled up to Purcell, not only were the principals there from the other elementary schools, but our lunchroom staff, smiling, greeting parents, the assistant principals, kids were like, just wanted to see their teacher. You know, they were hanging out the side of the window. They could care less about the food. They wanted to see their teacher. And again, it's about those relationships. Speaking of which, I have reached out to Superintendent Byrd numerous times, and she has, with 110% dedication, responded and answered the most minute concerns. But it calms people when they can get answers. And I can say, I got it directly from Superintendent Byrd's mouth. Because people are nervous, you know, and I guess that's why the toilet paper's flying off the shelf. But we need to follow the science. And the science is telling us, look at Europe, you know. So I am accessible. I, I do not fall into the age group yet. That has to worry about any exposure. I'm a carrier. So, but again, I want to thank staff. They've all just been over backwards. I had some stuff for our migrant camps down in Mulberry. Two teachers out of nowhere showed up to help me unload two beds, a washing machine. I was like, bless your hearts. You know, 'cause I, I did bring the dolly, but it was sure easier with teamwork. So I want to thank everybody. So that, that's it. And please stay safe. Wash your hands this way, the correct way, not this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Reynolds?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the superintendent and her team over the past couple of weeks. This has been certainly unprecedented times, and you have led us through it with grace and true leadership. So thank you. I know that they've talked a little bit about some of the schools that, for lunches, I believe, was on the agenda. Did you have more to add? Okay.
I'll ask her at the end.
Okay, we'll come back to it at the end then for lunch stuff. Okay. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
Well, I had said I wasn't gonna say anything, because I know that we don't need to be in this room with 10 people or more. But I will say this. What a blessing it is to have a superintendent of schools who is as compassionate, as kind, as caring, and as knowledgeable as Superintendent Byrd. And I cannot thank Superintendent Byrd enough. I can't thank her staff, the things that they do, the time and the energy that they give. All I can say is, Lord bless them, and Lord keep them, and may his face shine upon them, and give them some peace and rest, 'cause I know they need that. I just can't thank them enough. And I would echo what Ms. Fortney said about today. I was at Churchwell, and the smiling staff immediately working hard, trying to make sure that they were ready to receive the families as they came through to pick up their lunches, and the principals from neighboring schools being there. Everybody just wanting to help. And so I'm excited about what we can hopefully do, not just within our school district, but with places like Girls, Inc., where we can partner, and have that as a hub, where we can distribute lunches. Because we're gonna need to expand, and we're gonna need everybody's help, so that our kids can be fed over the next month. That's amazing. Another month that we have got to be concerned about where our kids are gonna be every day. Because parents have to work, people have to eat. And so that in itself, to me, is a little bit sad. I understand the severity of where we are, but it is sad that we find our place, ourselves in a place like this. But only God can see us through. And that is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also would like to commend the superintendent for her actions and, and being proactive in this very difficult situation. And I know the most difficult time is, is yet to come, figuring out what to do for our students through April 15th, and, and who knows, maybe longer. I, like all the other board members, have received a number of calls and emails, and folks are concerned, they want to know. And I, I just, all I could say was, it's a very fluid situation. We're, we're getting information out as quickly as possible. And those communications were timely, and they were very, they were detailed enough that they were very, they were quite helpful. So thank you so much for that. We appreciate you. And I wanted to address something that Ms. Fortney said. She mentioned that COVID-19, you know, that there, that she wasn't old enough yet to be a part of that. And then she looked at me, so, just, just to be clear, I don't think I'm old enough to qualify yet either. I don't know, maybe, but.
It is 40 years old, so I do qualify for that.
Okay.
Nobody knows. I mean, I was just trying, never mind. I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson.
Not joking.
Well, I mean, you have to have some levity. It's, it is a very difficult and serious situation, but, okay. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Miller?
I just have a few, and I think I'm gonna let the superintendent speak on this, because I came tonight understanding that we're in a pandemic, and I sat through the meeting, which we had to do, waiting for the time we're talking about this, because the community is that concerned. Not only, my, you know, phone blows up like everyone else's, but I'm concerned, I'm concerned that we're giving information to the community in a timely manner and from a resource that is giving them the correct message across all platforms. I'm concerned about the kids not eating over spring break. I know that our, that Nikki Fried had, has issued that we're feeding children. I don't know that we have supplies to do that. So I would like to hear an update about how we're feeding children over spring break. I know with the teachers, I've watched teachers volunteer to tutor over the phone or online by webinar. We have staff that would volunteer, I think, to help get this stuff out to kids. I worry about the kids in bad situations in home environments. Now they're left this kind of time length. I don't know when they're eating. I don't know who's taking care of them. There's some great stressors happening right now. I would have loved to have a work session or a meeting just on the response, but it's kind of coming to us every second. So I don't know how. It's very difficult to manage that. So I would like to talk about those children and what's happening to them, and clarifying what kind of online learning. We sent out a survey. I've had a lot of questions about the survey. If they don't have internet access, they couldn't give us results on the survey. So I would like to hear a little bit more about what that results look like and what we're planning to do either now or later. Board meetings, I shared with Wes, you know, it's 2020. I'm not sure why we're not, he, he informed me the law, but I wasn't sure why we weren't using GoToMeeting or some kind of online service for our meetings. I'm hoping the governor changes that or relaxes that law, so we can meet, because we have a lot of business to go. I still have a list from the work session that we couldn't even get to, 'cause our work session was canceled. I don't know. I don't know that going with no meetings is going to help students for next year or next spring, when this is all past us and we have business to do. So I would like to stay abreast of what we're going to do or how we're going to meet, and follow the current law of sunshine. But I think other than just getting some more answers on what the expectations are, parents are already, you know, with the miscommunication from the news media, they're already very concerned on what this means to promotion, what this means to what's required, what are they going to have to do. Kids with disabilities that need supports, I've said this 100 times. We're feeding kids to age 22. We service kids to 22. I know when we copy and, you know, we have to copy and paste federal guidelines, and sometimes they forget about our 1%ers. I can tell you that happens all the time. But our 1%ers are, you know, that's a mass group of people, but those students are being fed as well up to age 22. So be careful when you're sharing that message that it's under 18, because some parents are a little shy of showing up to a school, being afraid they'll be turned away. So I'd like to talk about driving community resources and community connections, Girls Inc., our faith-based connections. It's going to take all of that to get us through this period of time. So I hate to give you a Bible to, or a three-chapter book, but I just need some more information for the community.
Can I comment now?
That's my report.
Of course, absolutely, yes.
And it is a lot going right now. So to give you an update on the school sites, and what I want to let the community know is, any student, any site. So if you have a student, they can go and get a meal from any site. They don't have to be a student at that site. So any student, any site. As far as responding back to our community, they told us we needed to add some additional sites, and we'll continue to do that, as I said on the media outlet today. And I did let them, in the media outlet, say, we do have kids to 22, our special needs students, and we want to make sure we continue to feed them as well. So Jesse King has been added, Griffin Elementary, Modela, Cunbee, Arvindale Central, and Jewett School of the Arts. And we'll keep reevaluating on where we are. With the news that we just got today, I can tell you that we'll probably be revisiting some of these sites, because we were already looking, if it was longer term, what do we need to do and how they're going to, the USDA will lack some of the guidelines that we have in place. And so that's what we're contending with. As far as the survey, the survey completion is not yet, so we don't know. We sent the survey out because we want to know, one, do they have connectivity? Because Comcast, and I believe its charter, is willing to offer the connectivity, which we have that as part of our packet that's going up, and it's also going to be online on our page. They can go and look and get that information, as well as what they'll be doing. We're going to have mostly e2020, which is online learning. We'll have some e-learning system, Florida Virtual. And our instructional continuity plan will be released shortly. All of that is in there. It's housed in one place. So they will have all, access to all of that. For our students that do not have the connectivity, and they're going to need paper-based, we are getting that material printed for them. For our teachers, I need them to just hold on a moment. We're looking at what we can do professional development-wise, online for them. Those would be coming for them as well. So those things are coming. We were already really in a process of finalizing all of our plans that we have, because we were preparing long-term in the event that it continued to happen. So as I tell everyone, please stay tuned and make sure you follow the website. Everything we get, as we update it, we're putting it all on our website. That's where the most current information is going to be housed. Again, if there needs to be any additional sites that people know of right now, just let us know. We're trying to get those sites up. It takes about 24 hours, because you have to get them added, approved and added. So just let us know if we need those sites added. Again, be patient with us, because this is new. It's totally different from a hurricane, I can tell you. It is very different. We not only had to build infrastructure, we had to do the staffing, we had to make sure that we can get it there. Now we're preparing for it long-term. Very different for us. But what you're going to see in a continuity plan is going to be for pre-K through 12. You know, as I stated to the media this morning, my heart breaks for our seniors. All of us that are sitting on this desk, we had our proms, we had what we call our grad bash, and we had our graduations and all that's to come. So that group, you know, my heart breaks for, it breaks for all of them, but, you know, those memories that they can go back and talk about. Just keep, that's a group of kids that probably won't have those memories that we had at that time and be able to share. So we're going to try to see what we can do in the near future. How do we do that to give something, some hope to that for the students? But please continue to follow the website, as we're going to be updating everything. We're trying to do as fast as we can get it. We're getting updates, I would tell you, daily. I'm on conference calls daily. So things are changing quickly with us. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrd. Mrs. Miller?
I just, are we feeding kids over spring break, or is there an opportunity to do that?
With this information, our first initial blast, because we didn't know about the 30th, now we're going to come back and re-huddle. We'll see how do we need to prepare to get, make sure our students have food over the break. Yes, we're going to do that at this point, because we do have some new guidance now. Please follow the website. That's where it's going to go. And if we have to send out calls, we will be sending those out. So we hope we're not irritating our parents, because we're going to send out those calls to get the messages to them as well.
And on the calls, yeah, that's something we have to do, and I've tried to explain that, because parents, when they hear the phone ring, they think it's going to be the worst, and they've stopped answering some of them, because it's another call, it's another call. So, but with the information coming like it is, it's going to be how they receive it. The biggest things about, you know, graduations are still planned. We don't know what that's going to look like. There's a lot of anxiety with parents that work. And so I know when we put this out, that the questions are going to be, students who need support, how are you going to do that online? And how, you know, is a site, school site responsible for those students on paper basis? So this is going to take a huge web of support to make it happen. And so I, you know, I'm asking for the teachers that are already volunteering, you know, just to keep that effort up, as well as citizens and community members, because it will take a community to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I too have a short report, but I felt it was important to try to educate some of our parents out there. I was, I enjoyed today helping out, distribute food for our students at Dundee Elementary Academy today. We gave out combo packs, I don't know if everybody realizes that, of a breakfast and a lunch item from 11 to 1. For example, today, our breakfast items included cereal, milk, cheese sticks, and applesauce or an apple. Today's lunch was peanut butter and jelly sandwich, a hard-boiled egg, carrot sticks, apple slices or an apple, a juice, and a milk. And I say that to let parents know we have this available at these sites. There will also be different lunches served every day this week. So parents, I implore you, I beg you, please review our list of schools online at www.polkschoolsfl.com. Let me say it again, www.polkschoolsfl.com, to find the closest school to your home. Because you can go to any of the listed schools and get free breakfast and lunch this week. Tuesday was today, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from 11 to 1:00 p.m. Also, please bring your students with you. We will give one breakfast-lunch combo pack to every child, school-aged child in the car. And most importantly, no family information is needed. There is no family information requested of any kind. Please take advantage of this wonderful service that our incredible staff are doing for our kids. There's no excuse to not have food for breakfast and lunches. Additionally, on Friday, in addition to the combo meal packs, the breakfast-lunch I've just explained, we will be distributing kid packs for students who regularly receive them. This way, we guarantee or hope that they will have food items to take home to cover the weekends. So on Friday, you get breakfast and lunch, kind of grab and go, and then the kid packs will be given out as well for those who are already on the list. Parents, this is huge. Please take advantage of it. Also, parents whose children have medication in the school clinics, please contact your principal to make arrangements to pick it up this week if it's needed. If not, it will remain secured at the school. But at this point, with school being postponed now another couple of weeks, that may be something that the parents need to think about for their kids. Please contact your principal if you need to get that medication from the school clinic. Furthermore, parents, I tell you to take the opportunity to teach your students life lessons at home. Some ideas are cooking, sewing, basic finances, pumping gas, laundry, deep cleaning, yard work, and the list goes on and on. And for a little bit of brevity, I challenge you to find all the missing socks and match up your socks in your household, if you run out of things to do. Moreover, remember, readers are leaders. Look online for reading sites, Google search, and I quote, read out loud stories. They vary from astronauts in space to Hollywood celebrities who will read stories to you over the internet. I just want to close by expressing my sincere thanks to our district and school staff, Madam Superintendent, Cabinet, who are working diligently to provide meals, educational opportunities, which you just heard about, disinfection of our schools and staff buildings for the safety of our school board family. And that's what we are, okay? Together, we're going to get through this. And I wish each of you a safe and healthy school break for as long as it may be. And I hope that everyone does exactly what the others have said. Stay clean, wash your hands as many times as you can, and know that to take this time for your family, and I think wonderful things may come out of it. I always try to look at the positive. Thank you for that. Mr. Bridges?
Madam Chair, I am looking at a press release just issued by the Florida Department of Education. It addresses many topics, and it will take time to unpack, but of immediate interest to the school board, Commissioner Corcoran has addressed school board meetings for the foreseeable future. Yes, sir. All district school board and state college board of trustees meetings through June 30th of 2020 are postponed and may only be scheduled for emergency purposes by the respective school district superintendent or college president. These meetings must be convened virtually or telephonically. If there's a vacancy or inability to serve on the part of the superintendent or college president, then the respective board chair may convene an emergency meeting. School districts and state colleges must ensure that meetings held by virtual means are accessible by interested members of the public. Ms. Miller, that addresses your issue. We'll have to reconcile what the commissioner has done with the governor's authority to do that, but we'll do that immediately. The other thing, Commissioner Corcoran urges adherence to the CDC's guidance for high-risk populations by canceling any mass gatherings, community events, and extracurricular activities, including sports of more than 10 people in a single occupied space at any educational program, school readiness, voluntary pre-K, public and private K-12, career and technical centers, and public and private colleges and universities. There you have it.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fortney?
I wanted to remind folks, something that a teacher told me this morning. They obviously are not in their classrooms, but in their friend circle, they're the ones watching everybody's kids, so that their friends who are not in education can go to work. And they have really come together and figured out a plan to do that, which I was, you know, and same thing with coming to pick up the lunches. You know, if you have somebody who is able to take all seven kids on your block.
Yes, do so.
Put them in the car and drive them there.
Yes.
So those kind of things, help.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Fortney, very much so. Ms. Fields?
I wanted to find out from Ms. Jackie, are we able to put the menu for the lunches and breakfasts on our website?
Let me check with food service, and I'll let you know. I can respond back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is public comments addressing items not on the agenda. And at this point, Ms. Huffman, if you would like to come forward, you've been very patient. We do appreciate that.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that, for the record, and it's understood that I'm not here as the vice mayor of Haynes City. I'm here as a concerned grandparent and a resident of it. After sitting here and listening to the update from Superintendent Byrd, she addressed a couple of my major concerns that I had regarding food, because originally, there were not going to be any meals next week, because spring break was already scheduled. But, of course, the governor said to close all the schools to the 30th with it, so now it's the 15th. But here's what I, what I want to say in this amount of time, and I'm going to talk really fast. You all will know how to get in touch with me, because I have questions, and obviously, I don't have time to be here to get the answer, and Superintendent Byrd may have to go and look for that answer. Every one of you should be aware of the rural areas our children live in. You also know that there's a large homeless population with children that are living in hotels and motels. You also know that there are Latino children who fear parents deportation. You also know that thousands of children ride on our public school buses to get to school, and that's indicative of limited or no transportation. So my question to each, to all of you is this, my questions. Number one, why were you choosing to decline options to get meals to the children as offered by USDA? Superintendent answered that. Now she's going to feed them through April 15th. But number two, what I really want to know is, realizing that there are so many of our kids that rely on the bus to get to school, it's great that you're offering it and you're opening up these locations, but it's no good to the ones that don't have transportation. And even if you have a neighbor that is willing to take you there, you have to bring every one of your children with you. A parent with four kids and the neighbor, that's six people in a car, which is illegal, because there's not enough seatbelts for it. I really would like for you all to give some strong consideration to expanding more sites in the community, or make it possible for these bus drivers to make some deliveries at their regular stops. You're missing thousands of children that are not getting the food. So you, we can be thankful all day long that you're providing it, but they don't have access to get to it. And that's what I'm asking you all to please consider, bringing the meals to the children. Thank you.
Ms. Fortney?
Agree. That's all. I mean, I think there's a way to do it, and... We just need to look at it. Yeah, that's it. Think outside the box. It's time.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Miller?
Yeah, that's what I think. Hopefully, when they meet, when the groups are meeting to decide how to expand, that they take that into consideration. A lot of districts have done it. They're small, I'll give it, there are smaller districts that are doing it, not our size that are putting these meals on buses. And through spring break, it would be an issue with not having drivers, because everyone's off. But we really have to be concerned. We're in a very rural and a very poor county. What, you know, I live in Lakeland. A lot of people in Lakeland forget. There are 17 municipalities and a lot of poverty here. And so we have got to figure out how to get to these kids who cannot come to us. And I'm hoping after the superintendent meets with her committees, they'll be able to come back with some kind of resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mrs. Byrd?
Thank you. One thing I would like to say is that today, we serve 4,500 meals to our community. We do recognize the problem. As I stated in my press conference, we do recognize our homeless and our migrant students, and we are committed to making sure we get to them. That's why we were asking the community, let us know. I've talked to city managers. Let us know if there's an area that we are missing. When it comes to the buses, we also have to look at the USDA guidelines. One, on temperatures of food, and making sure we get that food to those students properly. So we are committed to that. We do have sites. I've spoken, spoke with some of the city managers that's told me that they would even allow us to utilize certain buildings if we needed to. That's why we stood up more sites today, and we'll continue, you know, looking at, do we have the proper sites? sites today. And we'll continue, you know, looking at, do we have the proper sites in the areas where there's the greatest of need? And we recognize that. We're not perfect. This was day one, and that was the one thing I was telling everybody. Let me know where we need the site so we can get the food to the children. I want them to get the food. So just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrd.
Can I?
Yes, sir, of course. Mr. Townsend, go ahead.
It's just worth remembering that as of 3:30 Friday afternoon, they weren't even going to close the schools. I mean, the state didn't even, you know, like, we're Tuesday from then. You know, I think what the superintendent staff have gotten done is really impressive. I think the implementation of anything takes time, even when we know what we're implementing. Anybody who says they know what they're implementing in the next month is really not paying attention. It's going to be, we're going to need people like Ms. Huffman telling us directly what we need to do. We're going to need all of the community to communicate to us. We also probably need a little bit of the community's understanding that if we haven't gotten to something, if staff hasn't gotten to something, it's probably just because they haven't gotten to it yet. There's a lot of, there's just a million moving parts. And, you know, I, again, I want to, I put quite a bit of pressure on the superintendent last week on 13th Friday about closing schools, and she responded every time with calmness and grace, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I think it's, you know, it's just a long road to hoe. And, you know, I just appreciate everyone's effort and look forward to keeping going.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. I have one more person who signed up to speak today, and that's Lisa Burke. Ms. Burke, are you in the audience?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please. She did have to leave. Okay, I'll make a note of that.
Good afternoon. Chairmanwoman, and to our school board and to our superintendent. My name is Pastor H.B. Holmes. I'm the pastor of Rainbow Word of Faith International in Lakeland, Florida. And I'm the gentleman, I just recently was pulling together a digital divide summit where we had our local city managers, Tony Delgado and Derek out of Haynes City, and also Kim Long. We had a meeting last week with Assistant Superintendent Hill in discussing the need for our children having access to broadband. At my church, I have an 80-foot tower, and I provide free Wi-Fi to all of Combi in that area. There, we have, it's about 80 feet, and anyone in a two-mile radius, we're able to give free Wi-Fi to those students. And we have a computer lab that's there with about 10 Mac computers where children can come and access, do their homework, and have access to e-learning. And we're putting this project together, and we're duplicating it around Polk County. Our next project is going to be with Pastor Eddie Lake at New, wow, New Bethel, I'm sorry, in Lakeland. And we're going to look at expanding in Polk County. All I wanted to say is that in times like this, we do want to put our children first. And as a faith-based stakeholder, we would love to partner with the school district in making our assets available and saying that we're here to help our kids continue to strive, even if we need to become a location where potentially food can be distributed. We are ready and willing and able. We had a meeting today with several of our pastors in the community, and I just wanted to come and echo that to you. And we're looking also, a part of our meeting was to look at some of the towers that the school district has, and leveraging those towers. And we were going to ourselves provide the Wi-Fi to those towers that's not being utilized in those targeted areas that are underserved, where people don't have access to Internet, where they may not have Comcast or Spectrum. There are some local players that are in town that's willing to meet that need. About five years ago, I've been in the telecommunications business for over 25 years. I purchased the TV channels from PGTV, and I'm a local ISP. And I do this not only here domestically in North America, but also in Africa. So I'm a graduate of Lakeland High School, and my father at one time was an Air Force recruiter that brought me here from Albuquerque, New Mexico. And so there are some of us that's willing to stand behind our school district and say, we're in this thing together. So I just wanted to say that we're here to help if we can.
Pastor, thank you so very much. And I'm sure it's been noted by Ms. Byrd and staff. But thank you for reaching out because that means the world to us. Because these are unprecedented times, and it's going to take all of us working together as a community to figure out how to take care of our kids and, number one, get them fed. So thank you. Safety and health. Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward?
I had a comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Ms. Miller, go ahead.
I want to say thank you for doing that. We have a lot of faith-based organizations in our community, and you're definitely leading the way and making that charge of helping your community and your constituents in the area. I know in the past, we've talked, the superintendent and I have talked, and other board members about, you know, even having a faith-based coalition to keep these relationships building over time. So not just when we're having pandemics, but other things that the faith-based community could help with. And so I appreciate you're doing that in the Combi area. That's my area, and that's a lot of, the need there is great. So I appreciate you and what your church is doing.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Good evening.
Good evening. Lorinda Utter, 533, I'm sorry, 5322, Laurel Oak Drive, Winter Haven. I come to you as a teacher. I know specifically of several students that have no access at all to Internet. And the survey that you sent out asking what kind of electronics you have, the only way they can reply to that is on the Internet. Is there another way for them to respond to that survey via phone or something so that they can give you that information?
Great question. Great question.
They can respond by phone.
They can?
They can respond by phone, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Milhorne?
Larry Milhorne, President, Ask Me Local 2227. First of all, I want to say, I'm really proud of the people I represent today. They did a lot of things to, my custodial staff, they're amazing. They're cleaning our schools as, well, not right now, but they'll be back at it in the morning. But they've changed their schedules. I want to thank the HR department, because when I've had questions, Ted answered every one I've had. I think everybody's coming together to get through this, and that's what we need. My maintenance people are there every day, working. And my food nutritionists, can't say enough about them. Everybody's talking about feeding our kids. These are people that, I mean, they, some of our nutritionists are not working, they're home. But the ones that you do have here, they'll be here tomorrow. And when you decide to open more schools, Ms. Byrd, they, other ones will be there at them schools. Because they do care for these kids. And I want to just give a shout out to all the staff that work together to get this done, especially the people I represent. Because some of these are lower-paid people, but it seems like anytime we need them, they always step up. And this is not no different time. I've seen them do it through hurricanes, and anytime this district needs them, they will always step up. So I want to just give a shout out to them. I want to thank Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Fortney, for coming to my mother-in-law's viewing. It really meant a lot to me. I might break down, but I still miss her. But in the flowers that were sent, my wife was really, really touched. Ms. Williams, her principal, came. And the support that Winter Haven High School gave our family, I want to put a shout out to them. Because I gave my wife about all the time I could give her, where she could be with her mom. And I want to thank the district for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milhorne. Is there anyone else that would like to come? Yes, ma'am?
I apologize. I didn't mean to call out.
No, that's okay. We're happy you're here. Once again, if you'd be so kind and give us your name and address for the record.
I apologize. Erin Kilabru, I am the Director of External Affairs for Citrus Connection, which is the bus company. Do you want that address?
Doesn't matter.
2121 George Jenkins Boulevard in Lakeland. I just wanted to throw out, I cannot imagine how overwhelmed Ms. Byrd is right now dealing with this. But I did want to throw out that we have been in, she has been in communications with us at the district about providing transportation to those kids that can't make it to meal sites. So as it stands right now, any child the age of eight and over can ride our buses with no accompaniment. We are not charging them. We never have. That's the COLTS program, but we have extended it to eight years old and above. And then for the ones that are a little bit younger, the seven-year-olds and under, with an accompanying adult, we are not charging the adult. So free access to all of those children that are trying to make it. And then we received a list this morning. I assume we will receive an updated list tomorrow. With the list this morning, we were able to service eight schools. And with the ones that you verbally just said, I checked, and we're able to check three of those, because they're bigger schools on main roads. And just because I say we can service eight of them, that means that's the ones that we're going right by or that we stop at. It doesn't mean that you can't go to the Lakeland Terminal and transfer. It doesn't mean that you can't go to the Winter Haven Terminal and transfer. We can get you there somehow. It may take you a little bit longer. But the trips are going to be free from here until whenever this thing is over. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Yes, ma'am?
Is that with school ID?
Yeah, that was my question.
No. So unfortunately, my son and our executive director's children go to private schools. So we don't really understand the whole school ID thing. But it's, I'm under the impression that the eight-year, that third graders don't have student IDs, that they carry around like on lanyards.
They do have student IDs, but we're feeding the kids when they show up at the sites.
Okay.
Yeah, so when they're on the bus, and thank you for that. And we have added that to our page as well.
Okay.
So they'll know.
Perfect. So no, we're, we do realize that there are going to be some people that take advantage of the system. That's going to happen in any realm. But no, we are not going to continuously ask for student IDs because some of those little ones aren't going to have them.
No, I know where they are. Okay, we have a few people that want to speak. Ms. Miller?
I just appreciate what Citrus Connection is doing and your team. That's what we're talking about, just trying to get our kids to these locations. That's the biggest concern, I think, for the community. My son is homeschool, and my daughter's in a private school. So I understand that, you know, there are a lot of kids being taken care of. But the majority of our children, we have such a high level of need. So what you're adding to your program is going to help a lot of kids. So thank you.
Ms. Reynolds?
I just wanted to reiterate, thank you so much. I was trying to look at your website to see if they have the information that I could share. And it has it, but it doesn't talk about the parent being able to ride with them. Is that information that you're publicizing or just added?
No, no, no. We are publicizing it, but I think the verbiage was just agreed upon by Rob Davis this afternoon. So we are pushing all of it out tomorrow.
Okay. I will wait then until tomorrow to share it. So awesome.
It is on social media, though. So our press release, we sent to the district. I believe that Mr. Davis approved that one as well, like the verbiage in it.
Okay.
We are pushing that one out tomorrow morning as well.
Okay. I'll wait then until tomorrow morning to share. I just wanted to get the word out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Kilabru, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate the partnership. It takes a village to raise these childrens, and especially in this unprecedented time that we're in. So I just want to say thank you so much for being so patient tonight to wait till the very end of the meeting to speak. But what great news for us all to hear as we conclude our meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
And just let us know if we can help and partner further in any way.
They, I mean, your team, Rob and Vaughn have been great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Ms. Miller, did you still have?
I know. I'll learn to turn my laptop.
Okay, awesome. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to come before the board this evening? If not, the next order of business is adjournment. Board members, there being no further business, this meeting of the Polk County School Board is now adjourned.